Good evening, everyone, and thank you to our candidates, school board candidates. We're really excited to host tonight. My name is Patricia Singleton. I'm the principal at Brenneman Elementary School. So honored to be here with you all tonight. We have an amazing team here at Brenneman of teachers, staff, and awesome students. So first, I want to highlight Mr. Kolsoway, he's our amazing assistant principal. He helped with the logistics of the town, just everything around me. He's in the world, he is so wonderful. Let's give him a hug. I want to welcome over there and share one of our co-hosts here, Empowering. He started the tech team. And we have Jackie, Jada, and Lilia over there. Those are both students here that also have chairs in the tech. So let's give them all a hand.
Thank you so much. It's truly a privilege to host this event tonight. And I would like to extend a warm welcome to our friends at Brenneman for their unbreakable support. They have been with us since we had the fair language of Kolsoway in 2020. Before Friends of Brenneman was a thing. So they started off with us with little projects. And we're thankful that they have evolved to support us. And those are the day-to-day we see them. So thank you for your support. Let's give Brenneman a hand. Welcome to the League of Women Voters. We have Catherine. She was just sitting right here. Thank you Catherine and her team as well. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our candidates. We do our here tonight. So let's give all of our candidates a round of applause. So before we start, our theme is your strength in community empowered by learning. So if you want to take a little activity with us, if you'll go along with us with your arms, strength in community empowered by learning. All right. So we love these types of events because it's time for all of us to come together to support our schools because we are all better together. So we are so happy to have you all gathered with us this evening. If you're not familiar with Brenneman, we are honored to perform with our Spagian Cluster School. We offer music and visual arts. We also offer Spanish as a rural language. And we are proud to have a varied diverse student body with African-American and Spanish students that are dominant groups. And we celebrate the fact that we have 20 languages represented. Over 50% of our, about 50% of our students are English language learners. We also have three cluster programs in our school, K-2, 3, 5, 6, A that supports students with mild to moderate disabilities. And so we really are pushing for a supportive, inclusive environment. So all of our students are included in everything that we do, like recess, field trips, facilities. We include all of our students with 20% of our students being in our summer students as APs. And again, I just wanted to thank you all for being here tonight and allowing us students to live in the city, who are looking for a sit back and listening and learning from you. And thank you, Liam, for coming to spend your time. Because I've done probably a few of these before, so let's get on the record.
I also want to thank Catherine and the League of Women Voters for our partnership to do this together. And thank you Dr. Singleton, Kolsoway, and Puma, and Jada, and Jackie, and Lilia, and Elvart for that. Thank you for putting this together too. I am Julie Kelly, president of Friends of Brenneman, and also a proud community LSC member of Brenneman. We recently celebrated our second anniversary of the founding of our, not for profit founding. And we recognize, five of us in the neighborhood recognize that Brenneman families and communities needed community support to fill the gap between what CPS gives to the school and what is needed. And we also, one of our main tendencies is that we believe that neighborhood public schools make our communities stronger. We provide support in a lot of ways, from backpacks and winter coats and support for field trips, our volunteer program, which we started in an adoptive fashion. And we couldn't do that without the amazing support of our community. And I see a lot of people who I've seen and a number of our residents. And we really thank you very much. Our outreach continues to evolve under the amazing leadership of our principal, Dr. Singleton, and our AP, Mr. Kolsoway. Last year, Dr. Singleton asked us to focus our efforts on raising money to renovate the faculty teachers' staff lounge. These teachers were going out to their cars to eat lunch because the staff lounge is a bad shape. I am very proud to say that we have reached our goal to renovate the lounge and we are well underway and we're hoping it will be done before we retire. The after-school program budget was cut by $100,000. So Dr. Singleton asked us to focus our efforts on finding and funding after-school programs. And we are well on our way to doing that as we drive. And we're pleased to see you all here tonight. These candidates from our district board are really important to have a voice on the school board. And it is important for our people in our community to understand where we stand on different issues and how we want to vote. An elected school board is a big change for Chicago, huge change for Chicago. And I'm glad that you are all here today. And I appreciate the candidates being all here today. And I will now turn this over to Catherine. Thank you.
I'm Billie, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
I am the League of Women Voters and I'm a fellow on the town. We are a non-harcless political activist organization. And our mission is to both educate voters and to advocate for certain positions. And this is an education effort, but it's also a real charity act. So if anybody here needs to register or change their address, we have the fortune to do that same thing. So that's the church. We got our now set up a quarter. And we started with Kimberly Brown. And we got her little kid called Hannah Davis. And Thomas Day. And Karla Joseph. And Karla, it's Alan Rosenfeld. Okay. There will be some questions. And I see that I've collected a number. Some of these are overlapping with questions that we already have planned. So you might not have figured that question, but it'll be incorporated. Let's get started. Yeah, I can ask you questions in just a moment. But first, we will do that, a couple of things about what's going on. We moved to the elected school board. And we're moving to the elected school board. And this election, we will be electing 10 members. Those 10 members will be joined by 10 more members appointed by the mayor. And he will also appoint another president of the board. This is the transition here. In the next election, we will go to a fully elected school board. So just so we know. Also, something in particular that isn't always understood. Our candidates here are all in the district. And each district has an A and a B question. Some will look quite long or quite light. And goal of happiness, one of the men's, this district, the board is to fill in numbers to the key responsibilities, including, I don't know, number two, hiring and evaluating the CEO. Establishing the direction, goals, and priorities in the district. Approving district policies. Approving purchasing incentives, contracts, and intergovernmental agreements. Approving the district budget and capital improvement plan. Approving the school year calendar. Approving school continuous improvement plans, school actions, and school charters and contracts. Approving the dismissal of probationary appointed teachers, contract principals, and tenure teachers, and non-provationary educational support personnel. So that's the job description, okay? All right. So let's move. And when you are, you will need, this is just crazy number of people. And I was gonna do double questions and think it was just, every question is so important. So if you could absolutely stay to the amount of time that you're allowed. And Ariel, what they're gonna hear. Get it just loud, Ariel. Okay. If you start the sentence, you can finish it. But not a sentence, it has.
I'm Kimberly Brown. And I have the most experience and the experience capacity to serve on the broad education. It's incredibly important, involved in your role. Like you talked about with that job description, I have professional organizational experience and have actually overseen and managed budgets over $10 million. I have hired and been as the CEO executive. I have children who are in elementary school and not only have a little experience of working parents, but I also will have a long tenure to make sure that I invest through the next, you know, over decade in the CPS system. I've worked in a highly regulated industry that includes a lot of partnership with local states.
For your owning, that seems rushed. And if I do that, I would like to add, the young man's question is, why do you want this role? That's the greatest question. So should you do it on the third second? And I know that's tiny for everybody, okay?
Wonderful. I want this role because I truly believe that when cities in Chicago put public education first, everything across the city will follow. Education is not the sexy policy. But when our education and our school work, infrastructure is in place, public safety improves, communities and small businesses thrive, families stay, and our city prospers. Public education is the cornerstone to any thriving city. And I have the experience and the time to dedicate it to this role. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Davis. I'm a parent of two kids that belong to CPS. My answer to the first, the young man's question first, there's nothing more important for the city than the future of Chicago than education. We have to pay it right. I've been the last 18 years in the education finance business during the year at Session. I ran the state alone as student council agency. We were tough on Wall Street. We were bitter for students and continued to learn and then supporting them in other institutions daily. Today, two of the questions you gotta mention here are topics for the son who worked with the evaluation of CEO and goals. Evaluation, I think Pedro Martinez is doing a good job. And I think the fact that people are trying to fire him for not spending money that he doesn't have is sad and terrible. As far as goals, Reddick obviously spent $10 million a year. And we have two out of three students in the third grade level not getting a grade bar. That's not enough. I think as we, you voters decide which way you want to go on this, we're looking at Pedro and we're looking at the mayor and the CPS who want to fire him. And I think that's a sad thing. I think if the CPS and the mayor get to their way, we're gonna drive the situation into CPS into bankruptcy, probably enough in the city.
Tom Sted?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to the President and the League of Women Voters for hosting this on campus today. I am a CPS head. My son Al goes to kindergarten at Hawthorne Elementary. I started most of that over in Tappan. And I teach the area's public policy at the University of Chicago. Public service is a part of who I am. I certified years ago, started with the airport division, including a year in a row. Was bureau correspondent at Gensia for a little while, 2009, 2010. And I own an organization called Illinois Veterans for Change. We help out volunteer veterans on their state and local office. Our members include all major contacts through the special high rock campaign. I believe my resume speaks to, yes, perhaps, a degree of courage. And that's gonna be required in this time. I think everybody knows this is a really scary time with Chicago home school system. We have an unstable mayor led by a thematic political coalition that includes people who celebrate burning an American flag in front of city hall. It includes a woman who is advising the mayor who wants to call for abolishing the police. And it includes people who want to go raise poverty taxes to the max to fund schools that are 96% empty. This kind of craziness needs to solve. That's why I'm in this race. Thank you so much.
So Karla Joseph, do it.
Thank you. So I have been running for this role for 23 years. I walked into my first classroom in 2001. And I was a teacher for eight years at Ross River High School. It was in those years that I saw the breakdowns in our school system. And it's what my parents experienced when I was growing up. And I felt that we needed to make a change. Being the second language learner myself and growing up where my parents didn't understand what it meant to do school. And I felt that our parents still today were experienced in that. I am currently teaching CPS teachers that come back to the classroom. A traditional Lewis University student, since teacher program. I'm a teacher at my dad's elementary neighborhood school. I'm a Murius Chicago graduate at CPS. And I am committed to public education in my whole career. And I believe the reason why I'm running is because I'm running for all the families who know that they have those good teachers, who would take time and energy to work with them and to work with their parents. All of our children just work for that. And I'm truly, I teach at heart, and I will always be. Teachers are the most important asset we have in this district and in this city. And I'm ready to continue to have to teach.
Karen Rosenfeld?
Karen Rosenfeld. And I am excited to be running this historic race thing, Brenneman, the League of Women Voters. Well, I'm running. I have spent the past 30 years of my life involved in Chicago public schools. I was a parent of four kids that I live in this system. I was a local school council chairman. And I was also appointed to local school council by the town board. I was a teacher. I taught at Harding Elementary School and I taught at Dulles Elementary School. In addition to that, I work for Chicago Public Schools. I work in family engagement. Parents, I saw the disparities in the school. And as a local school councilperson and teacher, I saw what it's like to work in under-resourced schools. And we're gonna move the system forward. That's why I'm running, because I know what Chicago Public Schools need, because it's the only job I ever have.
Next is Karen Zabour.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to Friends of Brenneman and the League of Women Voters for having us here. My name is Karen Zabour, and I've lived in Uptown for 46 years. I have been CPS parent, an LSC member, and an active volunteer with Northside Action for Justice, working with parents and community organizations around the city, including in the fight for the elected school board. I am the only candidate in this race who has worked full-time in CPS schools in the last 15 years. And in those 15 years, education has changed dramatically. From how we think about teaching and learning to discipline practices, to the use of technology in the classroom, to the need for mental health supports ever since COVID. I just retired from teaching after 28 years. So I really know the current issues and challenges in schools and the needs of teachers and students in the classroom. As the elected school board, our task is to improve student outcomes. And my experience makes me the best follow-up for that task. In terms of why I'm running, I'm running to achieve what the parents told us they wanted during the over 10 years that we fought for this, which is well-resourced, high-quality schools in their neighborhood that their children can walk to. We want that for every single child, not just some children. And they also said they wanted for that transparency.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on to the next question. We're just gonna move on down the line now, so you're up next time. Okay, the question, hold on. The question is, currently, this is an unpaid position. How do you manage to avoid commitments with your existing responsibilities? 30 seconds.
CPS head, they don't pay me very much to teach at ULC, I'm just gonna tell them. And all I can say is that I'll manage, but I'll manage by doing important things, meeting set my agenda, meeting with folks that I've been helping. And understanding where I want to go and be some of the more intensive tasks of this set.
I will approach it the same way I do all of my jobs. We have to narrow the bid. We have to utilize possible scenarios, revise the plan in the next year. This is how I approach all of my jobs, all of my volunteer work. And it's the way that my family can come together to support this work, because it's not just me who's doing the work, it's also my family.
I will approach this job as any full-time working parent has ever approached a job. That's excellent time management, help from my family to make sure that everything else is getting done. And of course, I will work with all of the different stakeholders in this process to hear what they have to say, to be there for them. I'm committed to being the representative for district board that is available. It will be nice being elected or then appointed, because I'll be able to, you'll be able to come to me and I'll be able to listen to you. So I am excited about that. I am gonna ask him to stand up.
Well, I just, I just retired after 28 years, so I have a lot more time available. I only intended to be a volunteer after I retired. So taking on the volunteer job that I think will take 30-plus hours a week to do a good job on is really what I had in mind. I've been volunteering for 46 years on education issues, so I think I'm 100% prepared to do this job.
Thank you.
I am a working parent, and I have recently stepped away from my chief officer role and will continue to work part-time as an admin professor. My children are in full-time school, at a CPS school. But I think it is really important to begin to be working while serving. One, because there's absolutely no challenge on where the dollars are coming from and any capital question there. But two, my husband is not in any ethical conflicts, and he shouldn't be asking that. But two, it's empathy with a diversity-based parent in Chicago.
And this is for 60 seconds. What is your position on charter schools? Do you think the number of charter schools should be expanded? Do you think there are any regulations that charter schools should follow? What percentage of public funding should be allocated, should be allocated to charter schools to do? Ask someone else in here.
All right. So, but there, I'm gonna ask you to answer. There is a role for charters in our system. There are some good charters, there are some bad charters. I lean forward supporting the good charters and making sure we're not bad. That's one issue that requires transparency about that. There's some reform regulation, and also on the board of the CPS board, not for it. What percentage of the CPS budget should go to charterers? I can't, frankly. I oppose to expanding charters as a percentage of the number of CPS facilities or schools that we support. But neither am I, I'm not moving against charters. I just think that they need to be applied on rules. There are some good charters, I'm a part of the holding network, and we want to make sure we're supporting, but we also want to make sure that we're firm in regulating and reading that.
So can I, in Chicago, there's some reasons why charters have to come up. There's a myriad of reasons why I have parents, so today, who tell me that they have no other option in their neighborhood to turn their child to charter school. These are really tough decisions that parents make. I support charters because there are Chicago Public Schools students. All students that have looked at any bill in the city of Chicago, I'm one of the charter of Chicago Public Schools students. Chicago Public Schools is one of our students. They can't, like I'm saying, they can't really tell me what percentage of the budget should be allocated. But they should be reviewed and evaluated in the same performance metrics as all of our CPS schools. Because I need to ensure that all of our children and all of our school buildings are given high-quality rigorous culturally relevant education. And figuring out why they are incubators for ideas for Chicago.
Charter school students are Chicago Public Schools students, and they should be treated with the same respect as any other student. Charter school communities have their own communities. And charter schools deserve communities that they're raising their kids in. There's an office in Chicago Public Schools, and I know since I've been seeing you guys for so long, called the Office of Portfolio Services. I will lean on that to tell me what the moment looks like, how the charters are doing, and that kind of thing. Charter schools are also alternative schools. So it's our job to make sure that every single kid in CPS has a school to go to. For some of our children, that's one of the charter schools. So we can't talk about charters as something that we need to get rid of. It's not a bad conversation. These are CPS schools. I don't see CPS as a lot of earning charters since 2017. So in terms of expansion, I don't really see that as on the table right now.
The reason charter schools exist is that CPS made a conscious decision to inadvisably resource schools in low-income neighborhoods. And therefore, parents felt obliged to go elsewhere to get good education for their children. That's not a good foundation for, it's because they are families to the students who attend them now. And I certainly oppose any sort of expansion of charter schools. And the charters that we have should be unionized and have fully empowered LSCs, so that they are truly integrated with the community. In terms of the percent of the budget, I don't necessarily know what percent they should get. I mean, we need, once it exists, to continue, so whatever percent allows them to do that and provide adequately for the students who attend there, which is what we want for every student in Chicago, and adequate well-rounded education.
Thank you.
I don't disagree with anything any of my neighbors said. One, charter exists, we are one CPS. When the politics and shame and weaponize schools, you bring family and community to the children. And it's discussed that. Two, equitable funding is equitable funding. Whether they do have a former loaner, it does not include charters. So a school should be accurately funded, full stop. That it does require working with our partners at different levels of government. I can tell you, as an executive stakeholder manager, someone who's worked with high-level organizations, yeah, we have the people who are in the commission. And charters have been politicized, exactly what parents have. They had to start it out in the eighties and nineties as a very good idea and taken advantage of. We need organizational leaders that are independent, that can look at our system and our We need organizational leaders that are independent, that can look at our system and our children and design a structure that makes sense for the next twenty years for our school, not the last, give it to me.
Thank you.
There are a couple of issues that I think you've raised regarding charters. First of all, I'd say, uh, in terms of any expansion, I don't think any expansion at all, in terms of overall, obviously, uh, with the declining headcount, and so building these schools, I think makes not a lot of sense at this point in time. Uh, as far as, uh, the resources that they get, um, I think they should be equitable, and that includes things like state pass, which currently is only available to some schools and not to all schools, should be eligible, all schools are important, and they already, I'd say, capital investment already shared equally across the system as well, currently, the charter is basically left on the run regardless of that. As far as forcing the unionization on the entire system including charters, I think that would be comments about their natural importance.
Selective enrollment and other of CPS schools and programs.
Every child deserves a school that meets their modest desires or aptitudes. All of these schools must continue to exist in Chicago Public. Because at some point in a child's career, in a student's career, they may need a graduation. I have to ensure that all kids will be able to see themselves and succeed and achieve, so that they can end up where they want to go, meaning who they want to be, I'm telling my adults. It is not, they should not be limited to the schools that they're at, but at the same time, neighborhood schools must be the best everywhere in Chicago, because that is the base of all of our high-quality education.
This school, some of those are the best schools in the world. It's not one or the other. Parents shouldn't have a choice. Parents know what's best for their kids. I've got four kids, they're not listening, they all need different things, pretty much on a however basis. So it is up to parents, it should be up to parents, to decide what is best for their child, and then make that a reality for their kids. But it's not one or the other, they can both be great, and they should be great, we go back to every single student's child crisis.
It's very close to that, because that's not going to happen. Um, at the same time, I think it's problematic when we read articles that say that only one percent of low-income children from black and brown neighborhoods are getting into the top schools, and any kind of policies we have that are, uh, creating and maintaining such a huge gap in opportunity really needs to be fixed.
So I absolutely support our system having magnets selected enrollment. Um, we are currently sitting in a neighborhood school that is also a magnet. My children went to Nuttall, so that is a neighborhood school that is also a magnet. I like to say the world is not hard to wipe, it has the shades of brown, uh, that we need to get away from this concept that this is a zero-sum game. Never in history has any board or executive ever said, "Hi, we have all the resources we need." Ever. It is the job of any leader to raise their resources, and we will do that when we reinforce the trust that we can manage our money. CPS needs to show that we can handle finances and funds in order to get more, so we can raise all the funds. And we need to have better transparency about our schools, because the magnet schools have great problems, but the local schools, don't, parents don't feel like they can make that very choice, but like, we have schools of wonderful choice. And so we need to do all that work to raise resources so it's not a zero-sum game. Thank you.
I think the fourth district has a higher proportion of magnets, selective enrollment, uh, schools in the other district, uh, city. Way the great schools, I'd absolutely, uh, depend on, uh, I think that the, uh, first obligation is to, uh, people relax, and so, uh, who's drawn, who's drawn to our system, fundamentally, if the, uh, new C P U or CPS system itself knows kids, tells their parents to, and so, uh, all, all support the right parents and select schools.
So any school that produces Michelle Walsh should be defended, and its funding should be defended and protected. Of course, given the young, for example, the First Lady, I am absolutely a solid defender of our selective enrollment, self-enrollment schools, and will continue to do so on the CPS board. Having said that, uh, I agree with this data state, so before, as I should never say if I want to ruin this race, but I will, uh, I agree with states to data states, uh, on, on, on issue of diversity and, uh, our selective enrollment schools. I think, guys, I'm concerned that they can absolutely address. Uh, a word about the open schools. Uh, look, we have faced some very tough choices, uh, with charter schools, so I heard a ton of concern about, uh, closing schools in my conversations before, uh, this forum. Uh, unfortunately, there are realities. The other deadly listeners of having a school that's ninety-six percent empty preserved into the next few years cannot be sustained. We have eleven high schools that are eighty percent more empty. We can provide all these resources we need in neighborhood schools, it's going to require people.
Moving on to the next question. Rosie Delzest, I have heard this, but I'm not a Rosanna. January twenty-twenty-seven, please, um, so, please translate that statement, and then tell us what is your understanding of community schools or neighborhood schools, and how would you advocate for their funding and support?
So all four of my kids went to a neighborhood school, as I said before, I believe in neighborhood schools, they are the backbone of communities. They are a priority and so important to Chicago. Um, in terms of closing schools, we have a five-hundred-million-dollar deficit. We cannot close a under-utilized school, it would, that would...
Oh, what about, uh, more part of the workforce?
Yeah, um, I think a lot of us should have one elected school, the school board comes along. We should absolutely wait for us to take oath, and then let's get started on the business of the charter schools.
Thank you.
No closings, no consolidations, and no co-locations, which was not specified in the statement, and I think that's still a concern for a lot of us. Um, I think the pathway is sustainable community schools, of which there are twenty in the city. I want to just mention two of them, because, um, they were very under-enrolled. So one was diet high school, had, I think, a, got to next school, and now they are a fully-enrolled, uh, art school that many people want to go to. Another example, right from our own neighborhood is Upton, which two years ago only had about a hundred students, but we are a sustainable community school with an early college scheme program, and we're up to two-hundred-seventy-five students. So the answer is not just going in closed schools, the answer is to support schools with methods like sustainable community schools.
Thank you.
There is a difference between a school community and a building. And we talked about closing the school yard and what happened, and if you have a chance to make that up, wonderful. Ask the community where they'd like to live, ask the community where they'd like to be captain, ask the community if they would like to go live. And if it's a different building or randomly, wonderful, but a community and a structure that they sit in are very different. We've got those school communities, we can change a building.
This issue is one that, um, has, uh, this is a battleground for other, uh, philosophical doubts to, uh, be fought over. And reality is, CPS is a battle well on the downwind for the after that. And so, uh, I think you have to at some point assess realistically what the needs are based on changes in demographics, and it doesn't just mean the population goes down, you know, our demographics, and some of the hundred thousand students back up, or the taxes, and that will be great. But, um, I think you have to be realistic about what the actual need is for this school plan, but also, it's easy, I think, to overestimate savings in closing schools. And so, uh, there are a number of schools that have magnetic lower enrollments than the optimal, but the fact is, I don't think we can solve that, happily, if our, uh, let's try to set up open schools.
So I have two analogies for all of my colleagues on this, um, we need to better on. Uh, we have twelve schools, high schools, uh, in the charter school system that are eighty percent or more empty. And let me tell you why it's the right thing to do to consolidate these schools. These schools I mentioned, everyone served a white suit, seven of them are ninety percent or more black. Uh, the average age of these schools, eighty-eight years old. Uh, the reading test scores, uh, four percent of rate average, one percent of math. This recall is what we saw.
It was very dangerous to cross certain streets. It is very dangerous to enter a different neighborhood. I have students who couldn't come to school because that day, they knew someone was there or hurt them. It is not that easy to say, "Let's move and let's close." It really is not, and it pains me immensely, because these children that I served, my God, for eight years, are now attorneys and police officers and firefighters, and they have come back to, back to the city. I need to ensure that the neighborhood school that our children go to is not determined, and it's not a problem, but we need to invest in it. That is where they feel safe. That is where their families feel safe. We cannot take those schools away or our children. But yes, it is a difficult conversation, and if we look at it together, um, when we start having that just so far.
Thank you. How long have you lived in the fourth district? Uh, what issues have you identified that are particular, uh, particular reports to the fourth district? And the reason to the question here, do it, which one, is there a way to bring back Dodgeball?
Uh, well, I have lived in the fourth district for forty-six years. Um, I've been knocking doors, actually, for forty-six years, and certainly knocking on a lot of doors during this election. Um, I hear a variety of things, because there are a variety of communities that make up the fourth district, um, but I do hear from most people a desire for equity. So most people do believe that, um, every child should be able to go to a well-resourced, high-quality school, and I think that's the primary thing that we should be focused on as the board. Dodgeball, okay. You know, there's like, uh, killer Dodgeball, it's really kind of dangerous, so I don't know about that, I wasn't paying myself, but, um, I know students really love it, so I'm sure there's some circumstances, but we can play safe.
I was making sure that the principal was over, probably, because I love them. Uh, so I live in Pettiwater, Uptown, now in LeBong, that's a little city, the loop for a while, but we got parents out. Um, I'm just here to call this a few things, I don't leave my priorities, but I don't have to be transparent as, uh, the journalist that I am. I, uh, corporate manager, Dean, don't be pretty upset as well. Fuzzy, you can't get to school, it doesn't matter, and if parents are really calm and get to work, then our economy suffers. So as a strong, strong, honest, working parent, we need you to get kids to school, getting clean, adequate, playing buses and pedestrian walkways are safe. Transparency, you need to know what's going on, you need accountability, not in the school itself, but in central office. The trust is not with central office, we need real trust and facility management. Dodgeball, I like to teach kids, partner, and try to bring needle zoom for us, some good, some good N D As and liability waivers, not that I'm getting this second grade. We need a legal.
I've lived in this for forty-four years, uh, and I think there are two things that are important, uh, to the residents and voters of the fourth district. One is keeping the excellent schools, you have excellent, um, and this year, as the, as well-intentioned, uh, will to check, relaunches around in schools and neighborhoods, and certainly, uh, the town, the more schools realize that the entire city has to do better rather than rush to all some. So I think that proving the, uh, the rest of the city schools, uh, so that they no longer have to worry for kids, uh, not being, is, uh, is very important. Everyone in this district, even though our schools are excellent, as for Dodgeball, is that you have to just watch the presidential base.
I'm pro Dodgeball, related, I promote recess and more activity to give kids independence and, and challenge social, emotional learning, which I think is a kind of a better concept that we're getting at, uh, at regulation level. Uh, I've lived in a district for eleven years, I moved here out of South Miami in twenty-oh-seven, uh, and I live at the R C in Walcott, uh, Riley Road, or, I'm sorry, the hospital, uh, in Park.
Thank you. I've lived in the West District for twenty-two years. Um, when I was in high school, I got in the, the Florida Department of Special, I got a, from a kindergarten, uh, and I showed up to a friend's event, um, and lived in this district, and I've been living there for twenty-two years. I have walked the neighborhood far and wide, and what I see is that we have amazing schools and children that are traveling an hour and a half, that come to our district, that come to, um, high-quality, rigorous buildings that are providing our education. We are a welcoming district, and I'm so proud of that. When I've enabled our children not to have to travel three hours round trip to possibly come to our district, I am so happy that they're with us, but I want to ensure that they have the same opportunities closer to home, so that families can feel safer on their travels.
Uh, school shootings, school shootings, but safe in terms of relational safety, emotional safety, teachers being safe to teach what they want, students feeling safe to be who they are. The second thing that our district is really focused on, not ignoring these moral shortages. Our district wants our kids in schools, they want the kids to continue in school, which goes to me, being the unelected board, and building bridges between the district and Chicago Teachers Union. We have to work together, we have to work together to keep our kids in the buildings and keep schools open.
It's not only that, right? So one, we need actual, um, working budgets, but two, I would say that Michigan has some of our best buildings, so relative to Chicago, innovation that's on the way out. We have so bureaucratic, so much threat to me. We need imagination and innovation and some designing, maybe, to be real budgeting for our capital improvement, but it's definitely not that.
The capital is usually based on politics. Mayor decides, uh, Owen, Mr. Baker, uh, school, we still get built, uh, expansion, get built, uh, we still get put in, uh, Matten, that's the, uh, I think a Latin school board should, uh, do a comprehensive examination of all the rooms in the system, and, uh, have capable engineers and professional successively to be done, and then they are constantly, that is, uh, then people are even organized like, uh, the, uh...
So we have thirty billion in urgent capital repairs that we need to make right now to our school facilities. Under my plan, uh, we can make some tough choices about how we're going to finance our school system, uh, into the future. I believe that we should be, and we can, consolidate sixty old schools with higher than seventy percent, uh, uh, due on utilization, and build twenty new schools. That's going to probably cost about a million dollars, we could go into the bond market and find it, but it's going to require that we tell the bond market how we're going to find those schools to be bought, and that department did some of the tough choices that, talk about that.
So CPS has had facilities planned, um, it was just updated last year.
Capital improvements is a big part of Chicago Public Schools, it's hard to talk about neighborhood schools without talking about capital improvements. It is up to this twenty-one-person board to build coalitions with like-minded people to push for those capital improvements. This budget, the, the ten billion dollars, needs a really deep dive, we need to do a forensic dive and figure out where the money is going, so that we can invest in our schools and we can leave that place that students and families want to walk into and get a comfortable environment. and get comfortable in.
We need to start with the schools that have the most need, so no goosebumps falling in. Get rid of toxins like lead, asbestos, and gold. Make sure that H checks.
That's [inaudible]. And I think that the [inaudible] board and [inaudible] there on the website where reporters and the eagle and the parents interact, they wrote every single line I like to do a great start.
Well, the funniest [inaudible] I've had in my career. I was like, "Team," and I was like, "Sir," if I'm like the CPS [inaudible]. Oh, this is a lot. We have [inaudible] sometimes. That is certainly a topic of [inaudible]. But, you know, look, when I was in the military, we met some core values. It's the [inaudible] leadership, loyalty, honor, selfless service, honor, charity, personal courage. These are the kinds of values that anybody should have in public service. I thought these schools do as well. But clearly, one older person proved your [inaudible] instead of these is going to jail. We are losing all the [inaudible].
As such independent teacher brain, focus on students. If we are not spending time just talking about students, then I'm going to have [inaudible]. The role of the board is to ensure that we are increasing student attendance, that our students are able to get into college, stay in college, and make it careers. That is [inaudible] and form of necessity and everything else so far that I [inaudible].
I'll build on that. Not only are we talking about student outcomes, but we have to talk about student experiences. We have to talk about what it's like for the job to get on the bus hopefully in the morning, see the bus driver. What does it feel like to walk into that school? How are teachers teaching? Do they know [inaudible]?
Absolutely, we need transparency. We need to audit everything, start with air mark. You know, the companies that do the cleaning or don't do the cleaning, prepare the roof, which the students hate. That would be an excellent place for us to start making a difference in those contracts. As someone who's worked in CPS recently, I do know that sometimes we end up with particular companies that don't do such a great job because CPS is not really paying us bills. That's.
Yes, I changed it. That's why I'm having [inaudible]. It looks a bit like [inaudible]. They find us to work transparency and they find us to [inaudible].
Chicago Public School is very important to our [inaudible]. Three things. One, I want a public scorecard. It'll be [inaudible] super easy, but every board member will have to pull up or vote, so you will never have to remember why you voted. Be public and available. Two, need data visualization. I want you to know the dollar in your pocket, all of the states of Illinois, you have access to. Right? You have great data visualizations for everything else in your role. Why can't we get a [inaudible]?
Yes, I will. It was unanimous, no vouchers. Okay. Here's [inaudible]. Across the country, school boards are banning books and getting into what can be taught in the school. For example, critical race theory. How many of you would be interested in getting involved in those issues once on the board? Are you in favor of getting involved in those issues? Yes. Are you? Yes. Both [inaudible]. Do you want to take up the notion of banning books or get involved in limiting critical race theory and other kinds of subjects? If you are in favor of that, raise your hand. If you are yes, but banning and limiting, raise your hand for now. Okay. And we have, I do have a [inaudible]. All right. Will you all bear with us so we can get a couple more questions?
Very closely. Facilitating regular Zoom calls and forums on a monthly basis hopefully and making sure that I understand how CPS policy would be administered at Marshall School like this. And I certainly appreciate that.
That's a great question. I'm currently serving as Chairwoman of the [inaudible]. I've been here now for three years and I've served for like seven years. And I started serving for one of my children in a neighborhood school as a community member. The whole school capital is are the most valuable, I believe, one of the most valuable numbers that we have in Chicago Public Schools. They are the key to the pulse of the.
He's not starting with the answer, but asking what would the [inaudible].
In a lot of ways, students are the most important. I've been a student voice facilitator for a number of years and found lots of ways for students to be able to get their ideas across somewhere, they would like to see change in their schools. I think to really get student input, we need to go to the schools and talk to a variety of students. Surveys are usually not effective, just a small sliver, people fill those out. I will be having monthly meetings with LSCs, monthly Zoom calls to let them know what's going on and hear from them. And definitely we should have numerous ways to the community with various types of supports to ensure that they're all listening. Thank you.
Yeah, and a regular cadence in communication with the community is critically important.
Efficiently gathering information about [inaudible].
Okay. We're going to speak to the normal question because I got a number of audience questions on this topic. So here we go. How are you funding your campaign? Are you receiving support in the form of money or volunteers from any organizations or powerful, wealthy individual? And how does this fund achieve your thinking?
So my donations are from neighbors and friends and peers. I have donation and all that information is self-information that I'm sure you can go to the website, figure that out. I am raising money because I believe it's important to get ideas in my name. And this district is almost as big as the San Francisco district. So the only way to get the name up is to raise money and share what I believe to be the most important things in Chicago Public Schools. And I feel like I'm the best candidate. I have a ton of volunteers. I have 50 people that got signatures. So these are my neighbors, my friends, as I said, I'm actually a neighbor of the school. So I have a lot of parents and a lot of people.
My campaign is mostly a volunteer campaign. I have lots of volunteers, people that I've known for literally decades, and most people I've just met who are doing most of the work. I am, however, endorsed by a whole lot of organizations and I'm getting volunteers through them, donating donations through them to support the campaign. And that's because they're endorsing me because I have the platform that they agree with around ensuring that we have [inaudible].
So my campaign funding, I stopped others, I grabbed your voice and your money, giving maximum [inaudible] for. It's [inaudible]. My endorsements in voice and name are the CPS Parents Promote Classes, which is parent-run parent-volunteer organization for the classes back in the [inaudible] of Chicago. Racco, I [inaudible] University of Chicago. And it's an organization with student success and [inaudible] teacher success for [inaudible] Chicago. I'm proud of the [inaudible]. And also a few other, excuse me, I'm totally flinging [inaudible]. Let's have endorsement from the [inaudible]. The Planned Parenthood [inaudible]. Personal [inaudible]. Which will be set up for [inaudible] education and individual decisions under our [inaudible].
Just to be clear in answering the question, I have not taken any [inaudible]. The, my funding has come from family grants and [inaudible]. The [inaudible] is the one that I [inaudible].
And making it very clear that I am one to fight, say, [inaudible] in Jackson Potter, the [inaudible] of my being on the CPS board. And oh, money disappears in my account. That's quite remarkable. And I'll make that very clear right now. I am proud to endorse [inaudible] who represents a large portion of this work in [inaudible].
Hi. We have many more questions, so more questions from audience, women and others, but we really need to bring this to an end. So let's do closing statements, and I ask that you do a 60-second closing statement if you wish, okay? No, I'm ready.
I'm ready. [inaudible] State [inaudible] and [inaudible]. The reason I have all these endorsements is because they believe what I believe. And that's that every child, regardless of background, race, religion, or any other circumstances, is entitled to a high-quality, joyful, safe education. And that's not only for this sort of [inaudible]. If you have any questions, please [inaudible].
Thank you. The purpose that I hold in me is to do what I am to serve with my whole heart and my whole brain to ensure that all students will get the best education because Chicago is one of the best cities in the world. And [inaudible] we are [inaudible]. We all work together. And between CPS and all of the other agencies in Chicago, we will continue to produce the most talent that anybody else see, I guarantee that.
All I can say with explanation, I have stepped out and said that we need to start consolidating some of these little schools to deal with our budget deficit. But I would owe you detail on how. We cannot rip the [inaudible] off as we did, of course, remember 11 years ago. We must [inaudible] for the Chicago Public School System instead of admission for CPS teachers, for CPS families, with [inaudible] in real estate [inaudible]. People who want to come up with a sound plan for making the tough decisions and then put that in front of a CPS board. That's what I want to go for. That's the question I was [inaudible].